I'd like to call this meeting to order at 7:07. The Chair will entertain a motion to come on of executive session.
We have a motion?
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Eyes have it, motion carries, the Chair will entertain a motion to seal the minutes of executive session.
Motion to seal the minutes.
Motion to seal the minutes, do we have a second?
I second the motion.
We have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it, motion carries. Roll call by the clerk, please.
Carrie McGee?
Here.
Regular boss in here?
Yep.
Deb Bacon?
Here.
Gary Cody's absent. Ann Dixon?
Here.
Nicholas Gorham?
Here.
Ed Wazika?
Here.
Okay, would you please stand for a flag allegiance to Tom Sargent if you would lead us, please?
Aye. Flag allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation and a God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
And as you remain standing, if you so desire for invocation, Lord, we ask that you help this council and the public and help us make the right decisions that is in the best interest of the council, of the citizens of the town of Coventry. Also, I ask that you look over the federal government as we make good decisions with all the unrest that's going on in this country, in this world right now, and also please look over all of our first responders as the holiday season is coming up, we want to make sure they all stay safe, including all the citizens. We ask that, amen. We're in the evacuation plan? Okay, I don't have a lot of President's comments, but I do want to say that the holiday season's coming up quicker than we think, and I don't know, we don't, I think we have one more meeting before Thanksgiving, am I correct? I think there's one more. But anyway, just want to make sure everybody's prepared for the holiday season and have a safe holiday season. Also, Christmas is coming, we have our, General Nathaniel Green Homestead has tours, I think, up until Halloween, they have guided tours, so, and they have some Christmas specials, and I didn't do my homework to find the exact dates, but there's a couple of Christmas specials coming up at Spell Hall, so take the time to go out and see it, they do a great job over there. That's pretty much all I have at this time, so the, I guess we will entertain a motion to approve the town council minutes of October 15th, 2019.
Carrie, may I make a motion to move E1?
Yes, we have a motion to move item E1 up to at this time, we have a motion, we have a second?
I'll say.
All right, we're second, yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it. Okay, let me just get to E1 here. Okay. E1 is, Madam Clerk, would you read that, please?
Appointing one member to the Friends of Human Services Commission.
Okay, we have Michael Zaroli, we, first of all, we'd like to make a motion to appoint Michael Zaroli to the Friends of Human Services, do we have that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second?
I second the motion.
We have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Eyes have it, motion carries. Michael Zaroli, if you could come up, please.
Watch your step. Okay, ready right here. You solemnly swear that you will be true and faithful to the state, support the laws and constitution thereof, and that you will well and truly execute the duties and responsibilities as a member of the Friends of Human Services, for the term which you were appointed, or until another be engaged in your place, so help you God. Congratulations, thank you very much. You want to come here?
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thanks again, Mike, I appreciate it. Okay, let's get back to the approval of the town council minutes from October 15th, 2019. Everybody have any questions, any concerns before we approve?
No, I'm just going to abstain from voting, I was not in that attendance.
Okay.
Motion to approve the minutes from the council meeting, October 15th.
We have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
I second the motion.
Okay, we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it, motion carries. Okay, Mr. Wazika, we have item number four is introduction of our new planning and zoning director, would you have them on us, please?
Thank you, sir. I would just like to, something I want to start doing with any new appointment to any department head, is to just bring them in, introduce them to the council, in this case, I'm pretty sure the council, most members know them, but I would like to introduce them to everybody else as well. So, Mr. Russ Grossman has been recently appointed as the Town Planning and Zoning Director, he was our interim director for a couple of months, he is also our former head of the Planning Commission. So, Russ, would you mind just standing up and...
Russ, you're welcome to come up here. Russ has been a member of the town and served on a planning commission for years, and the position is well deserved, and I think he's going to do an excellent job, so I want to welcome you, you know, aboard to see if he would...
Come up here, thank you. Pleasure meeting you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, the next item on the agenda would be the school department report, that would be you. Madam Chair, good evening, how are you today?
I am good, good evening, everyone. Okay, so, the Coventry Public Schools will be hosting a community forum at each school to inform all community stakeholders about our facilities initiative, which include the necessity for school construction process. The current state of our facilities and potential strategies, plans, plans to address our facility needs, facilities needs. Studio Jade will facilitate each forum. Each forum will be posted as an open meeting to ensure that all school committee members can attend if they are capable and so desire. This is an aggressive schedule, but we feel it is crucial if we are to inform and engage the entire community. The schedule of the forums is as follows, all sessions run from 6:00 to 8:00. So, the first session is tomorrow night, October 29th, at Weston Coventry School, and then again on Wednesday night, a session at Hopkins Hill Elementary School, Wednesday, November 6th, Coventry High School, Monday, November 18th, Black Rock Elementary, Tuesday, November 19th, Allen Sean Feinstein Middle School, Tuesday, December 3rd, Ty Oak Elementary School, and then finally, Wednesday, December 4th, Washington Oak Elementary School. So, hopefully the public, it's one more, hopefully if anyone's listening, they'll hear and hopefully come to one of the sessions for their school. Weston Coventry 5th grade teacher Carrie Leczka recently traveled to Washington DC to receive recognition as one of the President's Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. The following statement was taken from the Rhode Island Commissioners' Field Memo. "The Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching is the highest recognition that a kindergarten through 12th grade mathematics or science teacher may receive for outstanding teaching in the United States. The National Science Foundation administers this program on behalf of the White House of Science and Technology Policy. Awards are given to mathematics and science teachers from each of the 50 states and four U.S. jurisdictions. The teachers are recognized for their contributions to teaching and learning and their ability to help students make progress in mathematics and science. Carrie was one of four Rhode Island teachers to receive this prestigious recognition. The school committee recognized Carrie for her outstanding teaching at our last meeting on October 24th, and we are so proud of Carrie and her accomplishments, so it was a wonderful honor for her, and there was an award of $10,000 as well, so it's really quite an honor for all of us." And finally, we'd like to congratulate Coventry High School, the Coventry High School Science Department Curriculum Coordinator, Stephen Lukowitz, for receiving a U.S. Office of Naval Research Grant for Chemistry through the East Bay Educational Collaborative. The grant is worth over $20,000 in equipment and training. The district had to commit two high school chemistry teachers for two days' training in the natural approach of, to chemistry program. Coventry Public Schools is very excited to have this opportunity that will greatly enhance our STEAM program. So, two really nice things to talk about. Any questions?
Thank you very much, it was good news, I love grants.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thanks, Kathy.
Okay, the next item on the agenda will be, District One is asked the opportunity to speak on a couple of topics, go ahead, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mr. President, I've asked to speak on two topics, turbines and historic preservation. On the subject of turbines, I visited three residents recently who have turbine noise issues, along with other issues such as flicker, and what has been identified by a resident as infrasound issues. As a reminder to all of you, shadow flicker is the change of light intensity at a given location caused by the moving shadows cast by rotating wind turbine blades. Turbine noise means all sound energy, both audible and inaudible, generated by a wind turbine. Our new ordinances will provide standards for both audible and inaudible noises. On one of the visits, Mr. Wazika was with me, and we listened to residents' experiences. Mr. Wazika has followed through with our legal counsel for opinions, and we are pushing the courts to decide on the appeal on our notice of violations on a number of issues such as shadow flicker, flicker, and container storage. NOVs were filed in appeal, so we are in the court system. I'm also pushing to have the updated noise ordinance and updated wind facilities ordinance brought before the council, and we expect it to be on the agenda in later November. Any ordinance which cites standards needs to be enforced, and as such, the town needs to have the appropriate equipment for measurements of compliance to our ordinances. So, I'm going to ask my colleagues, when these ordinances are brought before us, to support the ordinances and to support the purchase or rental of the appropriate equipment which we will need in order to enforce the ordinances. On the subject of historic preservation, a resident gave me a book called "The History of Green, 1845 to 1929" to read, and it really raised my interest in learning about the historical societies in town. So, I've recently had conversations with the presidents of two of the organizations, and I just want to give you a very quick synopsis of some of the observations I've made and some of the analysis that I've come up with. The town of Coventry owns two historic buildings, the Reed Schoolhouse Building on Route 117 and the Old Library on Old Summit Road and Summit. Both contain artifacts owned by the Coventry Historical Society. The Old Library was started in 1891 by a group of 40 residents who formed the Summit Free Library Association. Eventually, the association sold it to the town of Coventry in 2000. On Saturday, the 26th, I did an outside tour of both the schoolhouse and the old library recently. The old library is safe according to our manager, but the outside is in a state of deterioration. I found behind the building a very fresh Christmas tree in a stand, and I was wondering what the heck is a fresh Christmas tree doing behind, behind this library, and it turns out that there, across the street, there was filming of a, I don't know if it's a science fiction or a horror movie, and they had used the Christmas tree as a prop, and they had just thrown it behind to the school, behind the library, so it's a good-looking tree, but I was surprised to find it there. The outside of the building is actually in a state of deterioration, and to access the second floor, we really need to have a fire escape, a fire escape there. Neither facilities have regular open hours. The Coventry Historic Preservation Commission is a town-appointed committee, it has been given some artifacts that were found in the Recreation Department, so we have artifacts in many places. These artifacts have been restored and will be on display at the Recreation Department on Sunday, November 17th, and I've asked the commission to give an update on the progress that they have made and the project that they're working on, and they'll be on the agenda on November 12th. We also have another organization, the Western Rhode Island Civic Society, they own Payne House, 7th Station Street, the oldest portion may have been built in 1691 by Samuel Beckett, it was operated as a tavern. The property was acquired by the Paines in 1866 and given to the society in 1953, and it is on the Historic Register. We also have another association, Nathaniel Green Homestead, known as Spell House, 20 Taff Street, was built by General Nathaniel Green in 1770, was his residence from 1770 to 1776. Nathaniel Green, I'm sure I don't have to remind you, he was a top person under General Washington and was considered a very fine military strategist. So, what's interesting about all these groups, as I've been doing a little research, is that all of these groups are looking for volunteers. Some of the groups are so small, they can no longer even run fundraisers, and there does not seem to be much synergy among the groups. We have a very rich historical history in Coventry, and we do have a need for volunteers, and we need to rejuvenate all of these organizations in some way. So, my call to action tonight is, if anyone is listening to this meeting, is if you're interested in historical preservation, please contact one of the organizations or contact me to discuss what we may do to bring some synergy to all our organizations and then make them a very vital part of the history of Coventry. Thank you.
Very good, very point taken, I mean, we're always looking for volunteers, whether it be for the historical or other boards and commissions, so everybody looking at it tonight, you know, watching us at home, please feel free to step up and help us out, and also if anybody needs a Christmas tree, I'm sure you can talk to Ms. Dixon, and she will set you up with a tree.
Was it decorated yet?
No, but it's in a, it's in a wonderful wooden stand, all you have to do is lift it up. I was going to...
You think it'll last for a couple of months?
I would like it to get over to the Recreation Department, that would be a great place for it.
Okay, great, item number seven, Madam Clerk, I'm taking your job, if you would,
A report by Studio Jade in reference to the school buildings committee.
Mr. Wazika, we're prepared for that?
We are, Mrs. Mangerelli is going to give a short presentation, you all have packets of the slides, I believe there's 11 pages, and they're also on the widescreens for anybody to view.
Good evening, so, thank you for having me here, I'm really here on behalf of Studio Jade, Phil Conti, who you met at the last joint meeting, was unable to attend, so I'm going to go through his slides, I'll do my best to answer any questions regarding process, anything that's specific related to the actual details, as far as some of the nuts and bolts that we're getting to, if I can answer, I will, otherwise I'll just defer to a later meeting because we'll be back here often in front of you. So, just going through the agenda quickly, we're going to go over the RIDE, school construction process, the activities completed to date, and then the community engagement and the timeline and process going forward. So, our next step is really to submit our letter of intent, it's due by January 15th, but we have all of the information necessary, so there's really no need to delay in submitting that. So, our goal is to bring that back to the building committee on November 7th, to the school committee on November 7th, and then to the town council for approval on November 12th, and then once that's done, we'll submit it up to RIDE. Stage one, which is really our primary focus right now, that's where we're identifying our needs district-wide, that is due February 17th, so that's going to really drive a lot of the building committee's work from this point forward, to drill down to the needs by each building. As we go along through that process, this is where we'll really be coming back to both the town council and the school committee for updates, as well as giving you opportunities to review that stage one before we get to the final submission. So, included in the letter of intent, it's a prescribed letter, you can find it right on RIDE's website, it's pretty boilerplate that we have to stick to, it does require signatures, the superintendent, school committee chair, town council chair, it includes a compliance certificate that affirms compliance with the RIDE guidelines, the district map of our facilities, as well as the building committee list for the adopted building committee that had our first meeting last week, and other than that, it's pretty much just that packet that we get to deliver to RIDE, so that's what we'll bring back before you on November 12th. The activities completed to date, and again, I'm speaking on behalf of Studio Jade, so I certainly didn't complete all of these activities, but what Studio Jade has been working on so far, primarily data gathering, they've done that all summer long into the early fall, base plan generation, principal interviews for all the principals at all of our seven facilities, we've held several executive educational leadership team visioning sessions, which is with our executive leadership team, some members of the community, we had several sessions throughout the summer, and they've done their initial facility condition assessment, and so far, they looked at an assessment of about $50 million in infrastructure needs, and again, that's really just building, bringing our buildings up to where they need to be now, it's not talking about any programmatic or educational changes that may come down the pipeline. So, just a quick overview of their data gathering that they've done, so this is to give you an idea of their condition assessment by area of need, so building envelope, electrical, mechanical, interior finishes. So, mechanical was by far, throughout the district, the most significant area of need. And then to go over the district-wide needs by school, this was the identified need by schools, the high school is obviously our largest footprint, so it would make sense that that also carries with it some of its most significant need. Out of the visioning sessions, we came out with district-wide project guiding principles, so when we thought about what we wanted our facilities to look like in the future, these were kind of the guiding principles, doesn't necessarily address how that educational program's going to fit in those buildings, but really what we want to make sure each and every building has. So, warm, safe, and inviting, future-ready, reflect community values, equitable access, this one I would say is kind of key, given that we have five different elementary schools, and we talked a little bit about the community forums, if you have the opportunity, I would encourage you to go to a couple of the elementary schools, just to really look at what each school offers and which each school is lacking, and then keep in mind that all of those kids funnel into one middle school. Small school feel with large school pride, school as a community resource, and ultimately, we want these buildings to be sustainable going forward. I think this is probably Phil's favorite slide in this presentation, but really, their primary goal, and the building committee's primary goal, is going to be reviewing the project scope, the size, and the programmatic needs, and then balancing that out with the funding limits and the town's debt ceilings, logistical constraints, and other needs. So, we will need to sit down very soon with Mr. Wazika and Mr. Arnett, just for future planning, just to look at what capacity this town has. We certainly need to address all of our, identify all of our needs in stage one, but how we go about addressing those, we have to work in conjunction with the town, we certainly don't want to do anything that's going to set the town back, we still need to make steps moving forward to address our needs. And Mrs. Patnow addressed this as well in her presentation, but we do have several community engagement events coming up in the fall, this is just one round of many community engagement opportunities that we'll be holding, so they will have an event at each school, some have asked, can I go, if I can't go to my child's school, can I attend a different school? That can happen, Phil has asked that anybody who's there that doesn't have children there in their school, or won't have children there soon, to go up and see him, so that he can also make sure that he takes notes about their concerns about the schools that they're at. Studio Jade will be running those presentations, at each one, there'll be a presentation on the process and the timeline, and then there will be activities for the community to do a SCOG analysis, your strengths, challenges, opportunities, and goals, they'll do some image gallery walkthroughs, so different pictures of what potential classrooms could look like, and the identification of what the community is looking for in their school, as well as an aerial and floor plan comment board, again, to really drill down to see if the community's guiding principles mirror what we came out with as guiding principles, and to make sure that whatever we bring forward is not only representative of what the educational team is looking at, but also what the community wants out of its facilities. So, our path forward is to proceed with community engagement, to solicit input at each school, to engage educational leadership team, to incorporate the educational vision, work with the building committee for project alignment, and then share the needs with all stakeholders in support of the RIDE stage one.
Okay, well, I don't have any questions, I can see you've been aggressive in trying to meet a timeline, because you already have Tuesday at 29th, it's your first one tomorrow night, so I'm just certainly going to try to make it to a couple myself to see how they are, but any questions, any comments, anybody from the council?
I'd just like to mention that I am one of the two representatives from the council on the committee, I did attend the first orientation meeting, and it went very, very smoothly, we had a presentation, and I will be attending the session at Weston Coventry.
I mean, I don't have any major questions, if nobody else does, I mean, we're going to be briefed quite often on the progress of this, so I thank you very much for giving this, okay?
Sarah, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, the next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk, would be C1, please.
Report on Waterman Fisc Fund.
Okay, Mr. Wazika, you're prepared to...
Yes, Mr. Arnett and Mr. Robalod will be presenting primarily from John. We want to give a background and as much of the history that we found, we were going to have this presentation two weeks ago, and we held off, Mrs. Bacon was ill, and thankfully she stayed home and not got getting all of us sick, not to stay at home, but it was, so I wanted to do it when you were here, we found a lot of historical information that we dug up in a lot of the old town documents, they're still mortifying, we're still in process of looking for additional, this isn't the end of it, but we wanted to fill you into where we are and at what point we are right now, and we've given everyone, in fact, I've given it twice now on this full packet, so, John? So, John?
All right. Thank you. So, this was a time-consuming event, but it was really great as far as finding out some great information. Essentially, the historical information that is part of the packet on page 10, it does a really great job explaining that it was, been in place for over 100 years. Mr. Fisk bequeathed, according to the same way that Waterman bequeathed his funds to the town, and essentially, to the poor and needy, or to the poor in the town of Coventry. So, through time, the agent or the trustees of the fund are the council, and the agent of the funds was the finance director. Through time, if someone came up to the finance director for a need, the finance director would make a decision and expend funds through time. As the town has grown, and obviously, as needs of the town have grown, there's been the addition of the human services department, in which case, there are people that are much more qualified and much more knowledge as far as determining need in the town. So, that's where the human services department head came involved in this. So, the agent still remained as the finance director, making sure that the funds were still insured, that they were still there, and they grew, and they were used. And then, the department head determined the need. So, moving forward, and as you'll see in the back of the loan program, it sort of came about in 2003, and then in 2010, there was a committee that was put on with an acting member of the council. And then, as you'll see in my loan, in that write-up there, it should be on a case-by-case basis moving forward. Back in, and then essentially, we brings this up into the past couple of years where there's been a lot more discussion, especially with the sewer coming up and everything like that, that Waterman Fisk has come up into the limelight a little bit more. So, back in-
October 10th.
Yeah, October 10th.
October 10th, 2017.
October 10th, 2017. Council was essentially charged with looking at the sewer, I'll read it right here. Prepare and present recommendations to the town council for the sewer assessment grant assistant program funded by the Waterman Fisk Trust Funds by January 31st, 2018. It established a trust and loan program committee, just to look at it, just to review it. So, when I came in here, I was just looking around. I didn't realize that this has been, with all this historical information here, I didn't understand that it was already kind of thought about. So, what I essentially did was write one of these up. So, that's where we are today. I just decided if we have a program before.
One of the things I'd like to bring up on this as well, if you look at Mr. Arnett's write-up on this, you'll note that Mr. Waterman left $90,000 back in '91, and Mr. Fisk left $25,000 back in '54, so grand total of $115,000. And with the understanding that only the revenue from the investments on these could be spent. Mr. Arnett, what is the current balance in this account right now, 3.?
Well, if you're talking inside of the investment account only, I wanna say-
Total, total account on all of them.
Total account on all of them. It's in 2.8, I wanna say. I thought it was 2.8. I can't remember off the top of my head. I really don't wanna give it.
I think it's $3.7 million is what's sitting in this account right now. So, obviously, since its inception, we have let this thing grow and grow and grow way beyond. So, it's been a great asset to the town, and we're not proposing anything later on this evening that will do anything to change this or upset this with this sewer assessment assistance program that we're looking at, that you'll be looking at in a public hearing in a few minutes. So, I've tried to give as much as we can on this. Like I said, we're still looking on it.
I know 2.8 was in the investment account. You have the other amount in the cash balances. That's where you get a 3.2. I got you.
Okay. So, we're looking to hopefully move forward with that, but we are still researching and trying to find any additional data that we might on this, which we're back into, in some cases, back to the, all the handwritten notes and things like that, which makes it time-consuming. If anyone has any questions, see either John, Bob, or myself.
Are you, yeah, are you finished giving out? Yeah, so, go ahead, Councilor.
Mr. President, I have one question. I note that we are calling this, it's a grant and loan program. Is that correct?
I believe I put it as just the grant, I put it as the grant and loan program, just based upon precedent. However, there was, that section I put in the back end that it should be on a case-by-case and should be looked at more deeply before that should be going further. So, it's mostly, I really am looking at this more as a grant program rather than a loan.
Okay, because the reason I ask is that I noticed in one of the documents we have in our packet, it does call it a grant and loan program. And so, when I looked through the information, I didn't see what would be the conditions for giving a loan. In other words, it doesn't say what percent interest people would pay if it were a loan, what's the time period, or anything like that. So, I was a little confused as to whether we were giving loans and grants or whether this was really a grant program.
I put in the loan just for consistency with other things that have happened in the past. However, the reason why it is very basic at this present time is because it's not intended to be a loan program at this time. Right now, it's intended to be a grant program, as it was intended originally and things of that nature. So, it was by design just to make sure that it stayed as unified as possible to the historical pieces that have transpired in the past few decades.
So, if that's the intent, and you know, I would agree with you at this point in time, if that's the intent, then any documents that say loan should be really, that word should be stricken from the documents because we don't really have the infrastructure to support a loan program. We don't have any details, and if we go forth and say this is a loan program in addition to grant, it's a little confusing.
I have no problem striking that verbiage from the write-up.
The thing was, in 2011, 2012, there was a resolution passed on the loan, and that's why we put the name in there. But again, tonight, we were hoping that you would go this way because we don't, I don't anticipate it as a loan program. It's meant to be a grant. It's meant to assist the people, not give them another debt. It's meant to help them, and a loan is not really helping them. We're looking at a grant out of this. So, we will change and remove that before anything gets finalized on it.
Thank you very much. Are you in agreement, Mr. Arnett? Does that make sense to you?
I am absolutely in agreement with that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Robalod, you had something that you were gonna say, so, put your comment.
I concur with our finance director. I do think that the intent of this fund from the folks, from Mr. Waterman and Mr. Fisk, were to help the poor in the town of Coventry with a grant and not, no mention of a loan from the initial documents. That's how far back we went to the initial written wills of both of these gentlemen and what their intent was, and that's kind of what we revisited as we went back and researched this.
Well, I appreciate the work. I mean, it's interesting to read some of these old documents from many, many years ago when it initially started, so, you know, it is interesting. So, thank you for all the work. Do you have a question, Councilor?
Actually, I have quite a few. Thank you so much for doing this. I did put everything in chronological order just to try and get a grasp because, like Ian said, there are a lot, the programs were loan programs, grant programs, and I was trying to really understand this, so bear with me. The report that you gave, John, it states on here, right on the very first, Waterman bequeathed $90,000 in July 1891. I just want to confirm because in a report from the former finance director, Bob Tebow, on 12/7/15, he stated it was bequeathed $54,200. So, I didn't know where that number came from.
The difference was, back at the original time, there was a piece, when I was reading the document, he bequeathed a certain amount. It also got put into a trust, and I think it was supposed to be dispersed through a church at that time. And then, the dollar amount actually changed from that $90,000 a few years later, so.
That was the Isaac, are you confusing that with the Isaac Fisk because there was a compromise?
There's also, Isaac Fisk had the same type of, had the same type of instance.
Okay, and specifically in the Isaac Fisk, in his will, he specifically states that it is, the funds are to always be known as the Isaac Fisk Fund, and they are to be separate.
Correct. So, they are completely held separate, so that when you look at the financial statements, you'll see the Isaac Fisk Fund and also the Waterman Fund. So, they are held completely separate.
Okay. And in your, it says expenditures through the 1900s indicated small expenditures, which were directed by the finance director with larger expenditures requiring council approval. The last time I could find that the director was the appointed agent was back in 111389. After that, I couldn't find any other agent that was appointed.
I believe there were some in the, I know I saw some in the 30s, the 50s.
Yeah, I'm only going by the documents that you gave us, so you didn't provide those to us.
So, that's, I could go pull more documents, but that's essentially what I saw. And as far as the small expenditures, I saw some that were expended for burials and things of that nature.
Okay, yeah.
The documentation is a little bit light.
Okay, because what I did find, there was a lot of gaping holes in the finances that were not reported. Years went by where no reports were done. So, you also referenced Resolution 20-09-2976, establish the merging of the Horatio and Waterman and Isaac Fisk Funds into the investment account, Waterman Fisk Assistant Program. I couldn't find that resolution. However, there is another resolution on 32309 stating that they, it doesn't say anything about merging, but it is about bringing in DHS and a nonprofit, Coventry Friends of Human Services. Is that what you're referring to?
So, I believe I was referring to, make sure I'm just getting this one correct. Resolution 276, I have 275, and I have Exhibit A on the back of this, so it's very well could be missed it by one number. But it's in Exhibit A for the March 23rd, 2009.
The resolution, March 23rd, 2009, is 19-09-2975.
I have that here too. So, let me look at this.
And that's the establishment of the Waterman Fund Assistant Program.
Okay, so I just got the wrong resolution number.
So, I don't know what that resolution, 20-09.
Page 48, 49 is where the resolution is that she is referring to, and Exhibit A on the back end, it looks like, for the assistance program. Thought that we looked through that a couple times.
And when this, I just want clarification also. When this became the Waterman Fisk Assistant Program on March 23rd, 2009, there were two signatories, one being the DHS director and the other being the chairman of the Coventry Friends of Human Services, Inc.,
What page in the packet, Mrs. Bacon?
That's, I, I'm referring to March 23rd, 2009. It's a resolution, 19-
Wait, but it came out of the packet.
I typed everything out myself. I don't know what it is in the packet. I took everything out of the packet, and I put it in chronological order and typed everything out.
Mrs. Bacon, I mean, some of this research, we could, again, if we don't have it in here, this is gonna be time-consuming to go through. We can go back and do some additional and try to find what you're looking for.
Oh, I understand, but I just want, you know, to know, I just want to point out also, you referenced May 16th, 2011, with the establishment of the Waterman Fund, the Waterman Fisk Trust Loan Program. When that was appointed, I'm still looking for the Superior Court approval for that because we need Superior Court approval to do any type of loans. Loans were provided out, but we never got the Superior Court approval.
That's one of the things we're looking at on the whole process on that.
You mentioned already that there seems to be some gaps in finding some information, so we're trying to find as much information as possible.
So, the $1 million loan that was given out to Maplewood and Maplewood to purchase the homes, has that been paid back?
As of this point, it has not been fully paid back.
That has not been paid back. Do we have any accounting of how much has been paid back?
We do.
How much?
I don't have that in front of me at the moment.
How about the other loans that are referenced throughout the documents that you gave? They had no dates that the loans were provided?
I haven't seen any other instance of any other loan.
Okay, because they are referenced in the documents you gave by Pat Shirtlift, that loans were-
As far as the, from what I remember off the top of my head, that they were, a committee has been done, but I don't know of any other loan that are outstanding at this point.
Okay, so, talking about the committee that was formed in May 16, 2011, the Waterman Fisk Trust Loan Program Committee was formed. However, the only person that was ever appointed to that committee was Ted Jeznick, the councilman. Years later, Karen Carlson was appointed to the committee, but no other members were appointed to that committee. And actually, I was trying to figure out the committee because I was just recently appointed to a committee, and I was like, wait a minute, these don't make sense. So, on May 16th, it was the Waterman Trust Loan Program Committee, established by a resolution. Ted Jeznick was appointed. Then, in 2014, it was Karen Carlson was appointed to the Waterman Fisk Loan Review Committee. And then, I have just been, along with you two, just been appointed to the Waterman Trust Fund Committee. Those two committees, I just, were never formed by resolution, so I have no idea how they've been formed. And then, we're fast-forwarding to tonight, and you said you wrote up the whole sewer assessment. That was in October 10th, 2017. The town council renames the Waterman Fisk Loan Program Committee to the Waterman Fisk and Loan Grant Program Committee. Again, no Superior Court decision. However, when that was done, it was, the committee was tasked that evening to prepare and present recommendations to the council for a sewer assessment grant program funded by the Waterman Fisk Funds by January 31st, 2018. However, there was no vote to appoint any committee members. I have no idea who the committee is. Did they ever meet? No presentation was ever made to the town council on January 31st, 2018, or any time in 2018. And then, on August 26th, 2019, you presented the resolution, which was submitted by Kerry McGee, creating the sewer assistant program.
Those things that have happened in the past, Mrs. Bacon, we don't, we're just reporting on what we're finding. We can't-
And we're not trying-
We're just documenting what we've got. I know what you're saying because we've run into the same issue when we're looking at it, but there's nothing, we don't have it because we don't know what they did.
All right, well, this was 2017. It's not like we're going back to 1891.
I understand that. I have the minutes, in fact, on that, and-
But I-
And all five members on that, the day that was passed, all five members voted to approve it.
We did approve, but honestly, I was on that committee, and what I was told, I mean, I got no information. What I have now, I regret voting yes on that.
Mrs. Bacon, and that's why we're trying to do what we're doing, to fix what's happened. You can't change what they did and what they didn't do.
I understand that, but moving forward, we have to have a full understanding. There are gaping holes. I mean, we have loans that are out there. Nobody seems to know we've loaned money to people, and we have no idea if it's being paid back. How much is being paid back?
I have that information, that they make regular payments every single month.
All the loans that were-
The one that I know of, yes.
You know of one loan, but you don't know of the others.
All right, can I say something?
So, I mean, I just-
Mrs. Bacon, excuse me, let me say something.
Yeah.
We're doing this so we can move forward. We're finding information. Now, I'm getting really aggravated because these guys have worked hard to find out the history. Okay, we want to move forward. We want to make sure we do it the right way. But most of what you're saying tonight, it's just making these guys look like they've been doing something wrong. They've worked their butt off.
I'm not accusing anybody of anything.
Listen, you're out of line. I'm talking, please.
Oh, wonderful.
All right. You have done nothing but sit here and ask questions of the past, and we have no control of it. I understand we want to move forward. We want to make sure that going forward, we do it the right way. Everything you're bringing up is, these guys have done nothing wrong except research and find the past. That's all, I mean, you're making it hard for any department head, anybody to come up here and want to say something.
Kerry, when we have $1 million loans out and no one knows if they're being repaid back, we have other loans.
Our finance director is aware when they're being paid back. It has nothing to do with what we're moving forward. It's our secret that we have this loan. He gave us a copy of the resolution. He knows that this loan is out there. We're paying, it's not paid up, but it's being paid back. It's not something the finance director did wrong. He gave us a copy of the resolution.
And I'm not saying he did anything wrong, but we need to have a full understanding. We're appointing people to committees that don't even exist.
We are forming the committee at this time. All right, I mean, your point's taken. I've had enough. I mean, go ahead. You have anything else to say on this?
I do not.
Any other council members?
I'd just like to make a comment. What, what was the total, total dollar amount that we started with? We started with, what, $90,000?
$115,000.
$115,000? And, and what's in the, what's, what's the fund worth now?
So you have $2.8 million in the investment account, and about $500,000 in checking account.
And we provide Human Services with, with money every year from all the other- I, I, you know, I mean, there may be a lot of holes out there, but I think with the kind of, with, uh, with $2.75 million, I think the town's been pretty, and the council's been a pretty good steward of this account, so, uh-
$3.3 million is what's in there between the two.
But I think we really need a true, we need accounting of it, that's the problem. I mean, it's been a-
We're researching now to get an accounting. We really want an accounting, we are doing it, we're the process doing it.
And as far as the loans, and again, the, you know, the council is, you know, it says, is the trustee, is the trustee of the account, so the council gets to make decisions. And, uh, that, you know, the, uh, the loan that you're probably referencing, which happened, what, in 2000?
2003.
2003, uh, you know, I, you know, I remember that, that was when they wanted, uh, the, uh, the only way that was the, uh, the mobile home park over there, it was to try to get them, okay, to, because the state would not allow that to be quote affordable housing. We were trying to meet those numbers at the time. And the only way that they will, they would consider that, uh, was that if the people of the properties were owners. Now, there was a lot of discussion, there was agreement, there was disagreement at that point in time. But I believe that's how the, uh, when, when the vote took place to, you know, for the quote loan, was on the property, which I'm sure is leaned on the property. The only other one that I know of was actually a pay it forward loan, which was for, uh, again, uh, my-
A roof, a roof. And that was, and that came out of, and that came out of their, with sale, at the time of the sale.
Exactly, once the sale had happened, it, it got paid back. So not, to me, it was a pay it forward thing. And, and at that point, it was a council decision at my request, because arguably, that was, she was the oldest resident in the town of Coventry. She'd been here all her life, and, uh, at her age, at 101 years old, was still caring for herself, was still, uh, the only problem she had, she had lost her husband 35 years earlier and, and never was able to care for the property, namely a roof. And, uh, and that was at the request of the Human Services Director at the time, that we look at that. So I think we did exactly what the, uh, you know, what the fund called for, was to help the poor of Coventry, which I think she was at that point in time for that particular loan, which, in essence-
And I agree with you.
It was, in, in doing that. As far as the other loan, again, where it stands, that's what the Finance Director looks at, and he knows that.
Did we receive all of the payments every, when they're due, from them?
Yes.
If they continue, have we, have we ever, have we ever not received a payment from them?
Not to my knowledge.
You just don't know the total that's still owed on the loan?
I don't have the exact number off the top of my head.
Maybe you could find that and email over to, to confirm.
Very simple.
Okay, thank you.
Very quick, um, there were just two loans that I can find in the documentation, the $1 million and the $40,000 to the Coventry Housing Associates, which is referenced on page 60 of our packet. The other one is referenced on page 39 of our packet. So when you give a report, you can perhaps cover those two items. So one's on page 60, one's on page 39. Thank you.
The other loans I was referencing was town council meeting minutes, July 11th, 2010. And it was the presentation of receipts and expenditures, April 2009 to December 2nd, 2009. It doesn't state what the loans are, it just, loans including home insurance and rent.
And how much was that payback on that?
It, that's all it states, that's it, there's no information.
And that was in 2010?
2011, uh, 2010, town council meeting minutes.
All right, so, John, if you could look into that and also, we'll report on that in the next one.
Also, I would like, I would solicit to just, uh, speak to, I mean, some of the comments regarding Superior Court approval. I, I, could you tell me what, I, I don't know what Mrs. Bacon's referring to, so if you could help me out with that.
The Superior Court has jurisdiction over all trusts, um, and it's only when you want to change a trust from doing one thing to doing another thing, that you have to go to Superior Court and file what's called a Cyprae petition, which is a fancy Latin word for saying, to change it. And, um, I'm not aware of the need for any type of Superior Court supervision of this trust. This trust was left, uh, to the Town Council of the Town of Coventry to be held by them and their successors forever in trust. The income thereof to be annually expended under their direction in the support of the poor of my native town of Coventry.
This was, um-
So I'm not, I'm not, if you're aware of some type of need for Superior-
Well, do you want me to read?
Well, let me, uh, if you're aware of some need for Superior Court supervision of this fund, I, I'd be interested in hearing about that.
Okay, do you want me to read it?
Well, where is it from?
It's town council meeting minutes, January, January 12th, 2009. It is District 2 report, Councilmember Laura Flanagan met with Finance Director Warren West, Town Manager Paul Sprague, and Attorney Angel Evangelista-
Renee Evangelista, she's a trust attorney in Providence.
Of Edwards, Angel, Palmer, and Dodge, concerning the two charitable funds, Waterman and Fisk Funds. And it went on about some other things, but it said, "Be advised, in order to make any kind of loan from the trust assets, you would need to seek Superior Court approval." That is from the attorney.
And now, is that what you were saying, was if you changed it, you'd need to have whatever that Latin term was? Is that what that, was you saying?
Mr. Gorham, it's referenced on page 44 of 152.
Thank you, thank you.
Uh, item number four, there's a reference to it.
Right.
Page 44 of 152.
Yeah, I've got the, I've got the page, it's just District 2 Laura Flanagan.
Item number four.
We should, that we should seek Superior Court approval before moving forward. So, I don't know if they did that. And I'm not aware that when they loaned the money to the Maple Root Trailer Park Owners Association, that they actually did Superior Court approval for that either.
I couldn't find anything.
Certainly, the town can give the money away to the poor each year, the income. So, um, I'm not so sure that it, you know, that I agree-
So she was incorrect?
No, I said, I'm not so sure that I agree, I'll check into it.
Okay.
But I think if you can give it away outright, which is exactly what the will says, that you certainly, it, it follows that you could loan it, and that wouldn't be a change in the trust, uh, because you're, you're only loaning it. It's, it's a lesser of two. But I will check it out and I will let the council know. It's, it's a fairly simple answer. I have litigated Cyprae cases right here in Coventry for churches that were gonna lose all their money, and we kept all of it right here in Coventry. So I'm very familiar with Cyprae petitions. And, uh, I'd be interested in checking this out, and I will, thank you.
Yeah, I just, I just want to make sure, and then if we can get a handle on all the loans that were given out. I mean, that's the problem. Pat Shirtlift did report, and quite a few of her reports, some loans, but she didn't give any details, who they were given out to, the amount, what they were for, is there a repayment, interest, there's nothing.
You, you've got to look back at the history of what was, what happened. At the time, the Poxxon, I mean, now, Human Services was giving, given a lump sum amount of money. Those loans may have been handled internally through there, where they never came back to the town on where and who they went to. So we, again, during all of our research trying to find this stuff, that's what we were looking for, because we noticed comments in there about that. But we may never have gotten that paperwork, it may have stayed down there and never got to this point.
But it did stay in, in the resolution when it formed that committee with Pat Shirtlift, that she had to have, um, application, she had to have individual applications for every-
And they may have been, and they may have been down there at one point.
Okay.
But what I'm saying is, we never got them that were transferred up here. They didn't come up to the town side. They may have been kept down there, again, because of the situation.
Um, I think I have the answer for you.
Oh, okay.
When they were going to do a loan program back in 2009, it says that they were going to make loans from the trust assets. That's the corpus of the trust, not the investment income, but the money that is, that is producing the income. And they probably had to do that for the Maple Root purchase, because I think it was, that was a major purchase. I think it was, um, I, is, I think it's a million, I think it was near a million dollars. And so, it sounds like the idea was to actually loan money from the corpus of the trust. That would be a major change from the direction of Mr. Fisk-
That million dollars was in 2003.
Well, it's not income, it's corpus. But this program that, that was proposed by our Finance Director is not. It, it's, I, if I understand correctly, there's enough money in the income that we make the income each year, uh, a form of, in some cases, and in some cases only, a loan. Is that correct? But it would always be income from the trust, not corpus. That's probably the answer, but I'll double check it. Well, I appreciate the, um, the question.
And I think we are trying to clean it all up, get, get a grip on what it is, you know, what's happening in the past. We can't change what's happened in the past, we do want to move forward.
This, exactly, so I have no problem removing it until the loan portion is resolved at another time. Again, this is a grant through the interest income purpose. It's only very much intended the same way that was intended at the founding of these programs by both Waterman and Mr. Fisk.
I do have another question, um, dating back to 1980. You gave one of the documents February 5th, 1980, and it's regarding the Coventry Cemetery Fund. And to execute and deliver all shares of stock, stock currently held by the Coventry Cemetery Fund in the following corporations. They were told to sell them off Rhode Island, I mean, Narragansett Electric Company Chemical Fund, but I couldn't find if they were ever sold. And then, do you know whatever happened to the stocks for Rhode Island Hospital Trust National Bank and Industrial National Bank of Rhode Island?
I didn't see it, it's not in this packet, so, um-
You gave, it was in the packet.
Like, I mean, as far, you said for the documentation regarding those specific shares. So, I did not see those specific shares. So, again, this is back, what?
Forty years ago.
Forty years ago?
Yeah.
And I've, I've been here for a year, so, I mean, this is what I have. I haven't been able to find that yet.
Okay.
Okay, well, that being said, uh, let's move on, I mean, I think-
Can I just say one more thing, Kerry?
Yes.
I, I know, I just want to say, moving on, can we get some policies in place with this? It just seems that, you know, the accounting, we're documenting-
I, I think that's what the goal is now, Councilwoman, is to try to get a grip on this.
Okay, no, I just want to make, I just want to make sure, because it seems to be-
I mean, they put a lot of work into it, and I know that it is jumping around. We're back 40, 50 years ago, and so it is jumping around, there are some gaping holes in here, but I think we're doing a good job of trying to get a grip on it, and form, you know, forming this committee, let's get a grip on it and find out, you know, moving forward that we do it the right way.
And I understand that, because we are the trustees, but I want to make sure that, you know, like, I put a binder together of all of this, can we also do the same? Have a binder, have all of this, so when we all move on, there is something that someone can actually go and look into, because, I mean, to put this together, this 13 pages, it took me 14 hours to do this, and I know, I can imagine you trying to find everything also, but I think-
And doing a full-time job on top of that, it's time consuming.
Exactly, so that's why I'm just saying, you know, could we put something together like this, so when we can-
Councilwoman, as, as we discussed last time I was in front of you and doing my report, that policies need to be developed, we're totally, in total agreement. One of the things is, is getting the history of this program was our task the last time we spoke. So I think the groundwork is, is getting done. And I also think the, uh, the next logical step is pulling policy and procedures together. There's still some, and as, as our Council President just said, there are some gaping holes. And we're researching, because there's a lot to go through, unfortunately, when it comes to finding the history. That's what we're, we're in the process of, we want to give you good information. But we also, um, are looking to have consistent policy, because that's, that's one of the gaping holes.
Exactly.
So, we will do that, but we need to do it collaboratively. We need to do it with the hopes of making sure that this doesn't happen to any successors. But the best way to do that is, we have to get hard information, and that's what we're in the process of doing. It is, um, a pretty monumental task when you're looking at all the regular job responsibilities that need to be-
I can only imagine.
So, your 14 pages, um, in conjunction with our many, many, many reams of paper, um, I think we can get to policy and procedures, um, on the other end of this, for folks that come after us.
Beautiful.
Thank you.
And then more, you know, financial updates to the council, more frequent updates would be.
Absolutely, by, by the resolutions, it was, um, we can, we can do whatever you'd like to do with frequency. But I, I do know that, uh, the amount of funds that are expended out of this account are minimal in comparison to, uh, to what they were previously, so.
Okay.
So I appreciate your time too.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Well, thank you very much for clarifying that, I think I solicitor has something to say also.
Yeah, just to, uh, Counselor Bacon's point, if you go to page 50 and 51 of tonight's packet, I think this was the product of, um, then Councilmember Flanagan and her meeting with Attorney Evangelista. It just suggested some procedures that should be followed for the dispersment of funds of Fisk Waterman. It's actually pretty good, quite frankly. And you could make a case that it still applies today, it was adopted. It looks like it was adopted, it was certainly recommended. And it, it just tells you how to verify that you're giving money to people who are, who are in fact residents of Coventry and so forth, and that they qualify. So, um, it looks like that, that might have been covered at one time, the procedures that you need to make sure that, you know, everything is done properly. This is certainly a good template to follow in the present as well, it was only 10 years ago, so. Which is a very short time, considering the long history of this trust, so.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other questions, any other comments? Okay, with that, it was just, there's no vote taken on this?
No, this is, this was, this was simply to give you the updated information that we found.
I thank you guys for working on it, and continue working on it, and, and giving us updates, you know, frequently, and, and like I said, it's, it's a lot of work, but, uh, Councilwoman made some good points, I mean, but we do have to start getting a grip on it, you know, so. I know you've only been here a year, but we're gonna, in the future, we want to move forward and make sure, because none of us are gonna be here forever, so we, we, we need to make sure that, uh, our future, you know, there's been so many different councils and different people all the way back from the 40s and 50s, so.
One, one of the issues we faced with this, like, several years ago, when our records were being stored over in MacArthur Boulevard, at the old school, there was a septic backup that, uh, covered a substantial amount of our historic financial records. And a past Finance Director made the decision not to spend the money to have them cleaned and preserved. So they went out the door, and it's making our job that much more difficult in finding some of this stuff. So that's part of the issues that we faced on it. They, the gentlemen have done, Mr. Arnett and Mr. Robelot have spent countless hours on, on this in gathering this data, and putting it and compiling it together. And, uh, we're still moving forward on getting the rest of it, or trying to find as much of it as we can.
All right, thank you, uh, Madam Clerk, uh, item C2, please.
Tax Assessors, Additions, and Abatements.
John, I guess that'd be you again.
I'll just stay here. I'll try to do this in, in, as similar to Mr. Celeste as possible, but we've lost our, our tax assessor, so, if you have any questions, the numbers are right there, uh, total amount. We had a total additions greater than the total abatements, so, uh, he did leave me some information as well. So I'm ready to answer anything you have. I do. The total abatements for this period was 21,500. However, the additions that were found by, through developments and things of that nature, a total of $47,000, so of net of just over 26,000.
That should be page one of that you got the question on.
Most abatements, um, I mean, are just the normal ones that you would expect, motor vehicles-
$47,000.
Some clerical issues that he found, things of that nature.
Motion to approve the, uh. Yes, are there any questions on the, on the abatements and additions?
I do not have any.
We do not have any. I'll make a motion to approve the. To approve the assessor's report. Do we have a motion to approve? Do we have, do we need to make a motion?
Mr. President, we haven't, we haven't, our packet a resolution.
Yeah, you do have to authorize it.
After page sixty-two.
Nope. All abatements, uh, have to be, have to be approved.
I don't like the way we do both back and front of these pages. Okay, so we have a motion. We have a second.
The motion is to resolve that the, yeah, approve the resolution.
Approve the assessor's report, yeah.
It be, be resolved that the tax abatements and additions for the month of October two thousand nineteen be hereby approved by the Coventry Town Council.
Do we have that motion? Do we have a second?
I second the motion.
Okay, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, item B, I'm sorry, C three, please.
Awarding of the primary winter road salt to Champion Salt LLC.
You have the packet on the, uh, that we handed out.
Yep.
This is a routine one that's done annually. We do it the same way annually, tagging off of, uh, the state to acquire the best, uh, deal on it. Kevin's last year.
Correct. Last year, we had a primary, which was Champion Salt, and we got a secondary, which is the state NPA for Morton Salt. Morton Salt's approval and award last year was a three-year award, and it'll continue on a state award through 2021. Champion Salt came back to us this year with a, and it tagged again onto the city or provinces' uh, approval, and it's a, a dollar five cent reduction in the price that we paid last year. So from forty-seven seventy to forty-six, uh, seventy this year, uh, I strongly support us saving the taxpayers money, being good stewards of the tax dollars.
And you had Champion Salt last year, you were completely happy with it?
We did, operated excellently, provided us the product, and, uh, we have no problem going back, that's why it's before us.
Any questions or comments?
Do they, I can't, I couldn't find it, because I pulled out my packet. I was glad to see it was a lower price this year. That was nice.
Yes.
Did they deliver?
They do. That's the delivered price.
Okay, that's what I wanted to find, I wanted to ask.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so if there are no other questions, I mean, we're saving money, so the chair entertain a motion. Yeah. I'll make, I'll make the motion. We approve the resolution. We make a motion and we have a second.
I second the resolution motion.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thanks, Kevin.
Okay, Madam Clerk, uh, D one, please.
Renewal of Victroling license, including those with additional hours.
Okay, just give me a second to get, uh, all right. Okay, uh, which ones do you need to, uh, I'm thinking that, oh, we should be able to take, take them all together. Yeah, I need to remove, I need to remove two of them from the total vote, uh, to recuse myself from item number thirteen, which is Silver Lake Pizza, and number twenty-five, which is the Summit General Store. I have ongoing business with each of them, and I will, so I'd like to remove those two from the initial vote. Okay, so I guess, uh, looking them over, we'll entertain a motion to, or a, a motion with exemption of number thirteen and number twenty-five. Are there any questions from anybody from the council?
Um, Mr. President, um, I have no forms here except for one license renewal form from Ty Oak Food and Snack. We're being asked to approve, uh, these renewals. Some want, um, additional hours. See no forms at all, so I don't know who wants what.
Because of the sheer number of these, and we've done it the same way for the past, I'm being, I'm being advised the last ten to fifteen years, we've never provided all those forms, simply because the packet would be monstrous, and so we've never, all of these forms have all been, all of the applications have been checked over by the clerk's office, all of the requirements have all been done, everything's there, but in the past, we just list these numbers, these, uh, names. We don't, we don't give the full pack, the full packet out in each one of them.
Now, when it says additional hours, they came in front of us in the past for additional hours, or is, I believe?
Yes. These are simply a renewal of, of prior ones that have all, that have been approved.
They're not looking for additional hours.
Are these people looking for additional hours?
No, no, they, they were approved prior, so they want the new one to just have the additional hours as well.
Okay, because if they were asking for additional hours and it's a new request.
We would have put it up in front of you.
Then I would be concerned about what the residents would say about later hours for some of these businesses. So we're saying we've already approved this.
All of these have been approved in the past.
And we've had no complaints from residents about any of these businesses for hours?
If they had, we would have, we would have made note on these.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions? So I guess with the exception of thirteen and twenty-five, Mrs. Solicitor, do you have a comment?
This is a public hearing.
I, it's not listed as.
Not for Victroling. No?
No.
Oh, no, for Victroling, okay.
Yeah.
Never mind.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so we will look for a motion with the exception of thirteen and twenty-five. Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the Victroling licenses, except for, like, uh, items number thirteen to twenty-five, as I stated. Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second the motion.
We have a motion and we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries. Okay, uh, the chair will entertain a motion to approve number thirteen and twenty-five. Has a motion read.
Mr. President, um, I make a motion to approve the licenses for, um, number thirteen, which is, was the Titus, Silver Lake Pizza and the Summit General Store.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries. Okay, thank you on that. The next item, Madam Clerk, would be D two, please.
Hawker license, sixty-day New England novelty, Keith Lambert, to be located at Sixth Reservoir Road, sale of Patriot gear and clothing.
All right, I imagine you are from the company?
Yes.
Okay, you are? Name and address for the rec, please. I'm sorry.
This is in, which one is that?
Okay, uh, tell us a little bit about your Hawkers license, what you're looking for, what you're planning on doing.
She's working on it. The girl's running the program.
It's a big truck of gear and clothes such as flag and stuff like that, you know.
Okay, and that's gonna be located at, uh, Sixth Reservoir, Sixth Reservoir Avenue, is that Confreedis property, is that?
That's on the corner, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Is it, is it at Confreedis or across the street on the vacant lot?
On the vacant lot.
On the vacant lot. Are you gonna set up, okay, are you gonna set up a tent or bring a truck, or what are you gonna do? A tent?
Okay, and that is for a period of sixty days?
Is that, um, seven days a week?
Uh, I think so, yeah. I think it would be.
Yeah, I don't see the hours stated.
Cause daily is not checked off, so I'm just asking the question. Ten to six daily?
Yeah.
So I think there's additional fee that would be required, is it?
Uh, I don't know, Madam Clerk, if you look at the application, uh, there's, uh, just had temporary sixty-day, twenty-dollar fee, and then he wants it daily, so I mean, did we charge you?
Be another ten dollars.
All right, so if we, if we approve this, it'll be pending another ten-dollar fee, okay, which will have to be placed before you get the, you, your license.
Right.
Okay.
You pay that when you pick up the license?
Uh, yeah, I'm sure you can make the arrangements with the, with the town clerk, yes. Okay, are there any other questions? Comments? No? I guess I'll entertain a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the license. I'll make a motion. We got a motion, do we have a second?
I second the motion.
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries. Thank you, sir, and good luck with your business.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, excuse me. Uh, the next item on the agenda would be E one. Actually, uh, we already did E one, so, uh, I'm thinking, are there any members from, uh, that I hear from the sewer subcommittee to be appointed? Are there any members here from the Coventry Historic Preservation Commission? Okay, there is, and are there, all right, that's it. So, uh, I guess we'll take each one at a time, because, uh, they'll have to come in and get sworn in from the sewer subcommittee at their convenience, uh, so, uh, Madam Clerk, you wanna be there, please?
Reappointing one member to the sewer subcommittee.
Okay, uh, you want to, uh, cover that one? I mean, that's, um, Michael Sakosha has applied, he's currently a member, and we have no other members that, that applied, you know, for the position.
Correct.
Uh, so if there's no questions or comments from any, yes?
I just have a question. Um, do we have, because we didn't have anything in our packet, do we have a confirmation that he is willing to sit on the committee for the next three years?
Yes, we have an, we have an email from him. The, the policy that had been started a while ago was if they wanted a renewal, they were simply, they didn't have to come back in and fill the whole application out, they have sent us an email. He has sent us an email requesting that he be reappointed.
Okay.
And either reappointments, that's how we're getting him now, by the request on the email, because we've already got their file in place, so unless something changes on it, we don't, they don't need to refill it back up.
Okay, so the address, everything is the same?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, well, that being said. I'll make a motion to reappoint Michael Sakosha to the sewer subcommittee. We have a motion, do we have a second?
I second the motion.
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries. And Madam Clerk, you'll get a hold of him and he'll come in at his convenience to swear with you. Okay, uh, the next item, Madam Clerk, would be, uh, E three, please.
Reappointing three members to the Coventry Historic Preservation Commission.
Okay, as, uh, first of all, we have Paul St. Armond, is he here this evening? Uh, Travis Bamford and Norma Smith are here. Okay, uh, I guess the chair will make it, uh, take a motion on this matter, uh, reappointing? Yeah, I'll make a motion to reappoint Paul St. Armond, Travis Bamford, and Norma Smith, uh, to the Historical Society, or Historic Preservation Commission, I'm sorry.
I second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second.
Mr. President, when we make the motion, should we be indicating the term of office and when it expires, or is it just enough to just say the name of the person?
I, I think the resolution says it on, I mean, I, yeah, I think we're just appointing the people, I mean, if you want, they are going to expire in two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two would be for Travis Bamford, and, and we could say, if, you know, in two thousand twenty-two, August would be Norma Smith, so, but I think we could just reappoint them in a.
Just checking.
Yeah, no problem, all right, just, I need to find the thing to swear, I mean, because I put it in my paperwork. All right, here we are. All right. Okay, I guess the only person here. We gotta fill and complete the vote first. Yes, yeah. Just give me another second, because the paperwork is a little confusing tonight, at least I'm confused tonight, but, well, it's the same. Yep. Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion, all opposed? None? Eyes have it. Motion carries. I guess the only one would be Norma Smith. Would you be, please come up, please?
Thank you, Norma.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, uh, Madam Clerk, item E four, please.
Ratification of the May fourth, two thousand sixteen engagement letter between the Town of Coventry and Pierce Atwood LLC.
Uh, Mr. Mazika, would you like to give an explanation of this?
Yes, I would. This is, uh, a situation that, uh, I ended up finding while going through some paperwork and some situations, and apparently, back in twenty sixteen, when Pierce Atwood was engaged to be a representative involving the, uh, the legal, legal issues with wind energy development, green development, uh, that, that whole situation. Our, our solicitor was unable to, uh, take part in that because of a conflict issue. So, uh, the council and the, the town manager at the time, uh, chose Pierce Atwood. There was an engagement letter that was sent from Pierce Atwood to the, uh, town manager. Apparently, that, that engagement letter was never accepted by the town council. It was never put up in front of them, the way it needs to be put up in front of them on any type of, with the attorney. So I am putting this up in front of you, several years late, but I, uh, again, to fix what was broken from the past, I've got it in front. This, uh, this actually came up a while ago, and there was a situation involving this where there's actually a cutout built into the engagement, because Pierce Atwood is also the legal representative of, uh, the contractor doing the Arnold Road reconstruction on the landfill. So that cutout, again, was authorized by the town manager. That's in here, but only up to and including, it's still in the original letter, but we have the resolution where you'll be accepting the engagement, but that cutout at the point of if it goes to litigation on, with, uh, Pierce Atwood at, uh, Arnold Road, then one of them would have to cease to represent either us or them, and that would be dealt with at the time. Instead of, the only other option on this of refusing this would be that we would have to actually probably, would have to go out and engage new council to handle all of them. Am I correct, Mr. Solicitor?
Yes, that's correct.
So we would have to engage and bring that council up to speed on the multiple years of work that they've already done.
At a big, significant cost.
Significant cost, that we may or may not be able to get reimbursed on, on this from someone else. The smartest move and the easiest thing is to do, to approve the, uh, the engagement letter with, like I said, with that cutout that says, we will, uh, that'll, it'll end at that point if it, if it comes to litigation with, uh, Mr. De Gregorio's Construction Company for Arnold Road.
Okay, I've had a chance to look it over, is there, everybody else, is there any questions, concerns? Okay, uh, with that being said, the chair entertain a motion. Make a motion to approve, uh. We have a motion to approve the, uh, the letter and ratifying the, the letter from Pierce Atwood. We have a second.
I second the motion.
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk, is F one, please.
Introduction and First Reading of Amendment to Coventry Code, Chapter Two Oh Four, Solid Waste Ordinance.
Okay, might I add, uh, I guess Kevin, you'll come up and just give us a little rundown, but, uh, this has come in front of us before. This is a first reading. This is strictly for us to look over, email the town manager, the department head, if This is strictly for us to look over, email the town manager, the department head, if there's any questions, any comments, the next time it comes up in front of us, we'll have a question and answer section. This is a first reading, and it's, we're not gonna ask a lot of questions on it this evening, it's just a first reading.
It's a full public hearing by charter.
Yes, and that'll, that'll be up, so this is us, for us to look at, come up with any, any comments, any questions, and, and most of the questions by, via email to the town manager or the, or Kevin, would, would probably be able to be answered, and then we can bring it out into the public on our public hearing. So, you wanna give us a quick rundown?
Yes, I would, uh, I have a short, uh, introduction here of what I'm hoping you folks will look at as you're taking consideration. Now, this is, uh, as Council President indicated, this is the, actually, the second first reading, so, uh, we're gonna have, we had everything merged into one document, which you all have before you. Uh, all revisions that you see are designated in red for omissions and blue for additions. The definitions have been revised for today's operating standards. Ninety-nine percent of our residents comply with the rules and regulations, but the one percent who refuse to comply with recycling, yard waste, and trash guidelines results in tax dollars being utilized to pay for their non-compliance. The non-compliance has resulted in rejected loads at Red Allen Resource Recovery, and is getting worse. In two thousand sixteen, we had one rejected load at a cost of four hundred and twelve dollars and sixty-three cents. In twenty seventeen, we had one rejected load at a cost of four hundred and eight dollars and thirty-four cents. In twenty eighteen, we had three rejected loads at a cost of one thousand two hundred and twenty-nine dollars and forty cents. Twenty nineteen, to date, we have resulted in nine rejected loads at a cost of three thousand nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars and thirty-nine cents. And that was through the end of September. The recycling disposal non-compliance has cost the town thousands of dollars in fines and disposal costs, which each taxpayer who follows the guidelines should be outraged. This waste of tax dollars by the non-compliance of the one percent. These violations include trash in the recycling containers, yard waste in the recycling containers, and non-recyclables in those same recycling containers. Without a strong ordinance, that includes enforcement, which discourages non-compliance and fines the flagrant one percent who refuse to comply with the guidelines or comply at all. This amendment clearly outlines the need, the need of revisions to recognize our automated collection system, which was started four years ago on October twenty-sixth. After the voters approved a bond referendum for the new sanitation system, the town recycling rate prior to the automated collection system struggled to achieve thirty to thirty-two percent. Just this calendar year, from January through September, the curbside recycling rate has ranged from forty-two to forty-six percent. For an average curbside recycling rate for calendar twenty nineteen of forty-four point three percent. Our goal is fifty percent, which is outlined by Red Allen Resource Recovery. One of the goals of the automated, uh, collection system was the reduction in workers' compensation claims. To date, one claim has been made in four years since the system has been in effect, and that was for yard waste collection. The fines in this ordinance are the final attempt for compliance. The process starts with stickers being attached to the containers three times. Two letters are then sent to the resident, and a third is sent certified mail outlining the violation. Only after this process has been exhausted will the violation be filed with the municipal court for a fine to be imposed and the possibility of loss of service. Public Works, Municipal Court, and the Police Department will be responsible for the administration, investigative, and enforcement of this chapter. The management plan formally outlined in Section two oh four fifteen has been replaced by the Red Allen Resource Recovery Diversion Plan, which you have in your packet. This is issued annually to include the state requirements regarding solid waste management. The Solid Waste Advisory Board has been omitted, as the town council has never appointed a board since the chapter's inception. And any residence avenue of appeal is through the town manager. All of the changes are simply housekeeping in order to make this a workable document. To not approve these revisions with the ability of for enforcement actions for non-compliance is like passing traffic laws for the police with no enforcement ability. Please, I take, ask you to take consideration to make this a workable document for us so that the town can stop wasting taxpayer money on non-compliance and move forward with a, with an up-to-date ordinance.
All right, Kevin, thank you, I, I like the idea that we're forty-four percent recyclable, getting there.
Curbside, yes.
Curbside, yeah, so, uh, I appreciate the word put into it, and we will definitely look it over. Like I said, this is a first reading, and I'm sure we'll have a bunch of questions, you'll be asked to come back again at the other.
I'm sure, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the next item on the, yes?
If we have questions, and I do, um, after email leads to, sorry, I have questions, so I am to email these questions to?
To the town manager or to the Public Works?
I will do that.
And then, when we have a public hearing, if there's any questions?
Then I can bring them up again.
Yes, you can bring them up, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
There are a few.
All right, uh, next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk, I believe is G one, please.
Do we have to open the public hearing?
Yep, public hearing, yes.
Public hearing for discussion and/or action.
Okay, um, Mr. Mazika, you wanna give us a quick rundown, and then we'll open a public hearing then?
This is, this is for the Waterman Fisk Sewer Assessment Assistance Program that, uh, we brought forward, uh, a month or two ago. Uh, we, it's in the form of an ordinance, the public hearing is to take comment on any and all concerns, questions, ideas on this proposal. It would, uh, it would allow us to, anyone with a, an sewer assessment in excess of fifteen percent of their assessed value of their house to get a grant covering that additional fund, the additional cost over the fifteen percent. Uh, there's, there's, uh, uh, check, check, uh, checks and balances in the system to prevent, uh, that it doesn't, we don't exceed the, uh, the revenue from the fund, that it still leaves the rest of the funds available for, uh, for the, for the other uses of the Waterman Fisk. It also is a program that will only be used sparingly when new roads come online for assessment. So this isn't something that's going to be tapped constantly, it'll be done when the assessments are, are made and they go out. There's also a piece in there for a, uh, for a, uh, one-year assistance, that's, that's all explained in, in, in the program itself.
I see, we're doing all we can to try to make sewers as affordable as we can, I, I know it's very costly, but, uh, we've had a chance to look this over, are there any questions, yes?
Actually, I have a question for Nick, because it, I just, when I was looking through my packet. On August twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen, this came before council as a first reading. Council voted and tabled that, so there was no first reading. Um, per the, our ordinance section, and, I mean, in the Charter, section three point one sixteen, B, it requires that we have a first reading.
I don't have the minutes of, excuse me, I don't have the minutes from that August meeting, I, was it? I, I don't think it was tabled, I think it was, um,
We tabled it at the last meeting, which was then the public hearing, I think, right?
Well, the clerk can enlighten us on that, I would.
Yeah, I just have in my, my timeline.
What's the, what was the date you're saying, Mrs. Bacon? If you give me five minutes, or two minutes, I can dig up the minutes.
August twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen.
August twenty-sixth, minutes?
Yes.
All right, we'll take this time opportunity for a couple minutes off, and anybody who needs to use the bathroom or whatever, just stretch. I will do that. Yeah, yeah, well, I'm, uh, Sorry, he's moving. What, you thought I, or? Are we getting compensated more, is it making?
But it takes them to, it takes them to all our, our platform, which is, somehow people can place, place their orders, place their orders on.
Yeah, that's pretty cool. I handed it to the order, oh, listen to the order, there it is, it's carrying up to me. Really? I've never used any of them. Okay, we're well set, that was, we've,
Yeah, I'll, I'll explain.
Yeah, okay, we're all set, uh, we're gonna back to order, okay, Mr. Mazika, please.
Mrs. Bacon is absolutely correct, on the August date, it was tabled, but it was brought back, Yeah, but, but, but!
You were, you were right about the wrong thing.
It was brought back as the ordinance, because it was, that was just simply a resolution, and it was tabled, because it was meant as a resolution. We brought it back September twenty-third for the first reading for the ordinance. So, you're correct on the first part, but you forget about the second part. So the first reading was already done on the twenty-third of, of September, and this is now the public hearing at, and done correctly.
Okay.
Okay, so we are,
Stand me there for a second.
Sorry.
All right.
I think you get to keep that you were right, though.
Can I do that?
I think you could mark that one down.
Can I get a half a star tonight?
If you wanna help, yeah. All right, so do we have?
Get a candy.
All right, now, do we, do we have any more comments, any more questions?
Well, it's a public hearing.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just asking if there's any from the council looking to open a public hearing, yes. If there's all the comments, then the Chair entertain a motion to open public hearing.
Motion open public hearing?
We have a motion to open public hearings, we have a second.
I second the motion.
We have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, ayes have it, public hearing is now open, is there anybody from the public who would like to speak on this matter? Yes. Name an address for the record.
I appreciate you having this hearing, um, I guess I just wanna start with a hypothetical here. So let's say that my assessment is two hundred thousand. Your, uh, this ordinance is saying, um, I only benefit if the assessment is over fifteen percent, correct?
Correct.
So that would be thirty thousand dollar assessment. So, for people in that hypothetical that have the two hundred assessment, they're only gonna get thirty thousand. Um, let's say the assessment is twenty-six thousand, so they wouldn't get any benefit whatsoever for this program. Now, what if we're still in that hypothetical, and I now realize that I have to pay a five thousand dollar fee to connect my house? I gotta pay, let's call it twenty-five hundred, to destroy my, my septic system. And let's just say that my plumbing inside my house was actually going in my backyard, because that's where my septic was, but now the sewer line is actually in the front of my house, so then I gotta pay seven grand, or let's just call it five grand. Is this program gonna be able to help with any of those costs?
At this point, we didn't, we didn't propose it to assist in those, we, we, we proposed it to assist in the assessment piece of it only, the assessment portion.
And when we say assessment, we are not including the interest rate, the, the cost of the interest on that assessment, correct?
Mr. LeBlanc, the way it would work is, suppose, suppose you had a hundred thousand dollar house.
Yep.
The assessment comes in, it would have been, say, twenty thousand dollars, so there's a five thousand dollar,
Difference.
Fifteen percent?
I understand.
Five thousand dollars.
Yep.
So what would happen is, you would normally, without this program, you would get, you would be charged the twenty thousand, you would have twenty years to pay it.
Right.
Effectively, a thousand dollars plus a month, a year, plus the interest. With the program, you would receive the five thousand dollars upfront, it would go and pay, five thousand would go directly to the assessment cost, reducing your assessment down to fifteen thousand.
Right.
That fifteen thousand would then be spread over the twenty years, reducing your annual cost to, uh, for the assessment.
I'm just, I don't understand where the people are gonna come up with all those, the funds for all those other costs, including if they have to buy a, a pump, that's another five thousand dollars.
Well, the pump, if there is a pump, that, that becomes a five thousand dollar credit.
Credit, but where is, where is the physical cash gonna come from to actually pay for the pump, is my question. That's what I thought, I, I understand, I do too, and I just,
I understand, there are, there are only so many things we can do.
I, I under, yeah, I agree.
And we're trying to assist as many people as possible with this.
I understand.
This is a start.
And it doesn't mean we can't change this as we move forward with it.
I agree, and we brought up procedures tonight, and I think, I think before another street is selected, there should be procedures in place that, because actually, um, one of my questions was, when are the assessments gonna go out for Hazard, Sand Street, and Arnold?
I am not proposing those until after this is done, so we have these, this program in place to assist the people in those neighborhoods.
I just feel like their comments would be fantastic in, in this setting right now, because they don't even know how much, they don't know if it's five thousand, they don't know if it's twenty thousand, they don't know if it's thirty thousand. Um, and, and I think their, their, uh, comments, because that's what this is for, would be extremely useful before this passes, but that's just my two cents. I'm sorry, hang on one second. How come there is a income verification for this program but not for the senior tax free's?
Uh, the senior tax free's, I will simply say, is being looked at as we speak.
Okay.
And I won't go any, any further than that right now.
And I, my last comment is, I just feel as though, you know, a, a town mandated project should not be pushing people into poverty, and that's essentially what we're saying is happening right now, because we're using the Waterman Fisk funds, which are for the poor, and that's what this town mandated project is doing, so I think it should stop for the time being.
Thank you, sir.
I'd rather hear the comments. Seeing none, the Chair entertain a motion to close public hearing. Yes, you, you go ahead, yep, go ahead.
Okay, I know in here, and I brought it up before, under the purpose of the program, it says that the program is designed to alleviate undue burden to the Coventry citizens in which a new sewer,
We changed that verbiage, I'm sorry if you didn't get the latest one, we did make an update on that verbiage.
One forty-five?
I'm on one forty-five, yeah.
To alleviate some costs of Coventry citizens in which a new sewer assessment may cause. Um, I, I brought it up before, this is a mandated sewer assessment, this isn't just, you know, this is mandated, can we put in there? I mean, we're, we're forcing this onto the residents.
Put in there that would say,
This just sounds like, hey, it's something new that they wanted, but, uh, this is mandated, we're, we're mandating this. This just sounds like, hey, it's something new that they wanted, but, uh, this is mandated, we're, we're mandating this on these folks.
Mister Solicitor?
This isn't like they're putting on a.
Where would you like the word mandated inserted?
Instead of, you know, a, n- new, it, you know, mandated, new sewer assessment may cause.
I mean, I.
It's a mandated program, we're forcing.
I know, but I, all right, well, to be perfectly honest, um.
I mean, we are mandated.
Adding, adding the word mandated doesn't really make, it doesn't advance anything in the ordinance. Um, sewers are mandated when there is, when a process is followed, and it's constructed. Uh, and then the, the sewer assessment comes out after, and yes, it's, it's, it's necessary to pay it, to pay the assessment. And this program is here to assist, but adding the word mandated to it, what you're gonna end up doing is, uh, I don't think it could happen, but I guess it's possible, if you put, if you make a mandated sewer requirement, uh, you could end up disqualifying people. That's the danger, because, you know, if it's, if it's not a mandated, I think all sewers are mandated, in the sense that they, they require, uh, all sewer assessments are mandated, because they require payment.
Mister LeBlanc, you have a question?
I, I just, I don't, I don't really think it adds anything to the ordinance respectfully.
I, I had a problem with the original, with the original wording, too. Uh, because, uh, in essence, it, uh, and, and I know you've, uh, moved, moved the change, or, or changed it, I, I, because I had requested some, too, but I still don't like what was, what was in here, because it's not gonna alleviate any costs, it's, it's, to me, I, you know, a thought that I have is to, uh, the program is designed to offer some financial assistance to Coventry citizens receiving a sewer assessment.
We can change the verbiage.
This plan, that's what the program is designed.
We can change that.
It's not meant to alleviate the costs, because it's not going to alleviate the costs. It may help them assi- assist them with some of the costs, which is what the plan does, and the financial, as far as the guidelines, will determine the amount of that assistance. The, I, I may or may not agree with the guidelines that are there, and that's, again, if it's a work in progress. Uh, again, what I would actually like to see is a scenario, uh, in the asset guidelines, in the income guidelines, as to how it will, you know, will, will affect, uh, or not affect certain people.
Not a problem.
Okay.
So I, I'm in agreement that that sentence is completely incomprehensible.
Yeah, yeah.
And needs to be changed, and I, I agree with your assessment, when you say you want a scenario, do you wanna say something like, if a person's home?
Well, no, all I want is a scenario to, to, to be tonight, not to be added in there, but a scenario to ask me, or in other words, just to, so, so the public knows, uh, uh, what, uh, okay, uh, uh, with the asset guidelines that we have in there, let's, for explanatory, explanatory purposes tonight, not necessarily to put into the ordinance.
Not to put in, but just to verbally.
Exactly, to say, okay, if, if, uh, you know, again, if, if a home is worth, uh, you know, X number of dollars, okay, et cetera. I'd like two of those scenarios, one for each guideline, if we could, I don't know if John could help you, help us with that, if, uh, Ed didn't get it.
Nope. I'll read that sentence, um, as amended by Counselor LeBlanc, this would be the second sentence under the, uh, purpose of program heading on page one forty-five of tonight's packet. I'll read it as amended. The program is designed to offer some financial assistance to Coventry citizens receiving a new sewer assessment, period.
Supposed to say four. My.
Uh, so, um.
Well, technically speaking, it, it doesn't offer assistance to anyone receiving an assessment, it's only those who meet the guidelines.
Right, it, it, it didn't say any, it just offered to Coventry citizens.
Says some financial assistance.
Some financial assistance to, uh, you know, I mean, with.
We'd have to say to me, who meet the guidelines.
I mean, I, I think the guy, the guidelines are the key, but those are clearly spelled out.
Just, uh, I mean, I mean, I just thought add them all would be redundant.
It's really a two-tiered, uh, qualification process, first, you have to, you have to, uh, have a sewer assessment that's greater than fifteen percent of the total assessed value of the property, and then second, uh, under income guidelines, you also have to qualify.
I, I have a question.
Yes.
So they have a sewer assessment, do they come to this program, do they have to prove that they've gone for a home equity line, been denied by a home equity line, a personal line of credit? Or they just come right to us?
No, they can come right to us on that.
No.
Yeah, right to us.
Okay.
You wouldn't, you wouldn't take out a, a line of credit to pay a sewer assessment, because the town has a, a more favorable, uh, program, the twenty-year program, to pay an assessment, actually, the program, the program just got better.
Anybody qualifies for that twenty-year program?
Yeah, there, there are no qualifications for that.
Okay.
This, this would simply augment the assistance provided in the twenty-year program, if you qualify this sewer assistance program.
Okay. I, I have another question, it's on page one forty-six of one fifty-two. It is under income guidelines, it is the third paragraph, it begins with, "The total funds available to be applied to sewer assessment payments under the income approach shall be administered under the same parameters provided under the Waterman Fisk Assistant Program, what are those parameters?"
Uh, Mister Arnett is gonna address that, I think.
Actually, the parameters for the Waterman Fisk, Bob, would you, I would rather have Bob explain that.
Absolutely. Uh, thank you, as, uh, as per, uh, guidelines, um, from the state, if you look at, um, the, excuse me, the guidelines for, uh, monthly income for the federal poverty standards, based on household size, and I could forward this information to you folks, so you actually have a schematic, I, I, they just updated their, um, their guidelines as of October first. Um, the, uh, guidelines, um, within this program, excuse me, based on family size, um, are based on the federal poverty, uh, standards. Um, at, uh, the two hundred percent of the gross income for expanded categories for eligibility for the, uh, SNAP program, which is also, uh, right share and right care in the past, that doesn't exist anymore. Um, they, they have, um, alternative programs, um, so the amount for a family size of one would be two thousand eighty-two dollars per month. The guidelines for a family size of two would be two thousand eight hundred and nineteen dollars. For a family size of three would be three thousand five hundred and fifty-five dollars. Uh, for a family size of four would be four thousand two hundred and ninety-two dollars. For a family size of five would be five thousand and twenty-nine dollars. Uh, for household size of six individuals, it would be five thousand seven hundred and sixty-five dollars. For a household size of seven would be six thousand five hundred and two dollars. And for the household size of eight would be seven thousand two hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Uh, any additional, um, person in the household would be an additional seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars, added to the seven thousand two hundred and thirty-nine dollar income. That is based on the federal poverty standards, and the standards the state of Rhode Island, um, adheres to.
Okay, uh, any other questions?
I do. I do, um, I'm just trying to find, you know, in my, my packet, when was the Waterman Fisk Assistant Program established?
When was it established?
Yeah, because I was, I'm trying to look through my packet.
Have to go back through our history again to see.
Okay, because I can't find anything with the Waterman Fisk Assistant Program, so I was trying to figure that out. And also, I just, um, with the definition of poverty, it is living without the necessities of life, food, clothing, or housing. So how does this sewer assessment going into what the, the gentlemen, these two gentlemen, their intentions were? How does that assist with the poor, I mean, aren't we creating the poverty condition that, with this sewer assessment?
Um, I, I can answer that, the, the council has the discretion to establish the poverty guidelines. Uh, it's in the will, that question was left open in the trust created by the will. Um, it's up to the council to decide, but the guidelines that the council has chosen, uh, in this, this particular program, I think are eminently reasonable. They're based on federal and state law.
But do you, do, I, I guess I'm going back to the original intent of their wishes, these two gentlemen, this was substantial money back then, and they said to support the poor of the community. I don't think they, I think they would, I, you know, just reading what I have of them, I think they would be appalled that we're dipping into this trust fund. We are causing this financial hardship on these folks, I don't think they had the intention of that, that we would be doing this to these people, we're causing their financial hardship. I, I just, I am really concerned that the folks that, you know, that are having issues, say, the, the elderly woman that needs to put a roof on her house. She needs to do that, if these folks have working se- se- septic systems, cesspools, we're now forcing them to go and mandate, put this and hook up to the sewer system.
You know.
We're causing their financial hardship, so that's what I'm concerned about, and I don't think that was the wishes of these two gentlemen.
I think it's within, it's well within the discretion of the council to create a program like this.
And to create a hardship.
That helps people that do not have enough money to pay a sewer assessment.
But here we go.
And that was, that was the, that was the clarion call that the council heard throughout the hearings that were conducted, uh, involving Hazard Street and elsewhere, was that people came and pleaded again and again that they didn't have enough money to pay an assessment.
But they're still not gonna have enough money to pay for the assessment, they'll hook up, the decommission, the, the sewer usage fees, they're still, we are creating a very significant hardship for these folks, this little bit that's gonna help is not going to bail them out of any financial hardship.
You know, the only thing I can say is that it's, it's.
And that we could just deplete these funds for the folks that actually have the hardships.
Though, we will, we will not deplete the funds, again, we would only create additional hardship if the council approves moving forward and advancing the sewer system. These sewers, the, the ones that they're gonna help, that this program will help right now, these have already been done, they were done already, they're out there, those assessments are waiting to be issued. Do it, we're gonna help them, going forward, if the council chooses to not advance the sewer program, and not put it in anywhere else, then we're not gonna do any, we're not, it's not gonna matter. But right now, we've got, I, I don't recall off the top of my head the total number of assessments, that we, that we've got waiting between Hazard and Arnold Road, but they're there, they're already out there. We're gonna assist them at the very least.
Okay, can I, can I make a suggestion then? Then if it's just to assist Sand Street, Arnold Road, Hazard Street, can this only be for those three streets? And let's see how this works, and let's see, and just strictly make it for those three, and as you said, we can, we can open this up another time, but can we just make it specific for these three streets?
But Mrs. Bacon, if we, if we make this specific to three streets, what you're, what you're saying is, and if the councils, future councils, do kick this thing back on, and start putting sewers in, and there's nothing in place, because we've already done this, and it's sunsetted after these three streets, what's there to assist them?
So what's gonna stop the town from just, you know, opening the floodgates on having the entire sewer program up and running, streets galore coming up, because they're gonna have this safety net of the, this four million dollars sitting here for the Waterman Fisk, that's what I'm concerned with.
Trouble with that argument is that they have to meet federal poverty level guidelines, as well as state guidelines. So, and so I, I think that also undercuts the notion that you advanced that, that it's not gonna be helping the poor, that we've created a hardship for the poor. They're either poor, under the federal guidelines, when they apply, they're either poor or they're not. And they don't get in the program if they're not poor, so, under, under federal law, so I just, I, I don't.
So I get, I get, I might, I guess I question for Bob, so folks that are living, you know, at the poverty line, do they all come in and ask for financial assistance for you? Or do some just, you know, live their way, just the way they are, they get by, or?
That's a very simple, uh, answer, um, not everyone comes in for assistance.
Okay.
I mean.
So, I mean.
Yes, yeah, let me, uh.
I'm just, I, I guess my concern is, is depleting these funds, and that, you know, we're not, that's what I'm concerned with.
Mrs. Bacon, we can't, because under the, under the, under the ordinance, it's simply, we cannot use more than the revenue, that's it, we cannot touch the principal on this, we're not touching the principal on this, this is not doing that, this is staying within the guidelines of what the program was, was designed for, only the, the, the revenue that's generated from it.
And, and to only do three streets, I mean, right now, we, we're not doing anything with the sewer program, it'd be, you know, it's, it wouldn't be fair, if we did decide to go, or future councils decide to go, they could easily stop it, as well as we're putting it on.
My, my fear would be that future councils start the sewer program up, this is sunsetted, there's nothing else there, and now, now somebody else is gonna have to try to go back and get something else started. Again, if we find as this moves forward, that we need to make it more lucrative if we can, then we can do that, we can make it better going forward. But right now, we're proposing something to assist the people that we know are out there, that are waiting, that are gonna be coming up through the system, and have a system in place going forward if we have to.
We are trying to assist the people, and, and we're still getting pushed back, I mean, we're trying to help to make it, is, is ease the burden as much as we can, Council, you have something to comment, you'd like to say?
I do, um, thank you. This public hearing is not to debate whether we are creating a hardship for people, I mean, that's another discussion. We're here to really have an open session to decide whether we are going to provide assistance to people for the sewer program through the Waterman Fisk Fund. That's what the hearing is all about, do we provide assistance through this fund? It is not to debate or to discuss whether we create a hardship with the sewer program, that's another discussion which we need to have, which is not really on the agenda, the merits of going forward with a sewer program or not, or what we're here only to decide is, if we have a sewer program and people have a hardship, do we use money from Waterman Fisk to support those people? That's the discussion up for today.
Thank you.
I understand what Mrs. Bacon is saying, um, and, you know, that's another discussion. Um, but here, it's, do we use the Waterman Fisk Fund for this purpose?
And I think this is just a tool to, to help assist the people, that's, that's all it is.
Well, I mean, I'd like to hear, this is a public hearing, so.
Yes, well, we've already, we've already asked people, it's still open.
It's still open.
Okay, are there any other questions, you have any comments? Are there any other comments from the public that would like to say? Seeing none?
I'd like to say one more thing, I'm sorry.
Yes.
One more thing, you know, we, um, I keep on hopping on solar farms and turbines and Western Coventry, and when there were ordinances put before the council, and there were public hearings, very few people actually attend to those things. So I'm very disappointed that when we have such an important program that we are debating on or discussing, so few people are here for public discussion. And I would just encourage those of you who are listening to us, who are here, encourage people who have a voice to come and let us hear their voice. Because we only see a few people here at any of these hearings, and then all of a sudden, something happens, and everyone says, what happened? Why do we have what we have? And we just need to have more public input to the kinds of decisions that we need to make, thank you.
Good point taken, okay, uh, nobody else, seeing none, we'll make a motion to close public hearing.
Motion to close public hearing.
We have a motion to close public hearing.
Second the motion.
We have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it, close public hearing. Well, chair, entertain a motion?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion that, uh, that we, uh, pass this ordinance as with the wording that, uh, amended, uh, to, would you please read what, uh, uh, do you, do you have that, that I, I gave you?
I have to go, what is the page number?
One forty-five.
You want me to read the amended section? All right, I, I'll read, um, just to get everyone's, uh, bearings on this, this is the second sentence under the first heading, the first heading saying purpose of program, and the second sentence has been amended to read, uh, pursuant to the amendment offered by, Counselor LeBlanc, the, the proposed amendment is. The, the proposed amendment is, "The program is designed to offer some financial assistance to Coventry citizens receiving a new sewer assessment, period." Um, and what I would recommend, Mr. President, is that the board first vote on the amendment, and then if, if the amendment carries, then we vote on the ordinance as amended, as a whole.
State Roberts Rules of Order. Thank you very much.
Just a coincidence.
No, we don't use Roberts Rules of Order. We will, uh, I will make legal advice.
I actually was copying the rules of the Rhode Island General Assembly, but, um.
But thank you so much.
I kind of like Roberts' rules a little bit more, to be honest.
All right, well, the chair will entertain a motion.
Well, I will make a motion for, to amend, uh, the ordinance, uh, as, as we just presented.
That's right.
Okay, we have a motion to amend the paragraph or the sentence on the ordinance. Do we have a second?
Yes. I, I'm sorry, I second the motion.
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries, eyes have it. Okay, the next, I will entertain a motion.
I will make a motion to approve the ordinance as amended.
Do we have a second?
I second the motion.
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk, it would be, uh, G two, please. Okay, why don't we do that? And we're going to do a public hearing.
Open the public hearing for everything.
Okay, we have, well, I'll let, Madam Clerk, will you read them all, and then I'll open a public hearing, so they'll know what it's about. It would be G two, three, and four, and five, please.
Annual renewal of Class A liquor licenses, liquor stores. Annual renewal of Class B liquor licenses, which are restaurants with full bar. Annual renewal of Class B limited liquor licenses, which are restaurants with beer and wine only. Annual renewal of Class D liquor licenses, which are clubs with full bar.
Okay, uh.
Can I, excuse me?
Yes, uh.
Uh, where, where's the Class C? Or did, he hasn't picked it up yet, right?
Yeah, we don't have Class D. Yeah.
I would recommend doing the C at the next meeting if necessary. I'm not even sure if necessary.
No, that's what I'm saying.
Just do it at the next meeting, if you, you know, wherever. Okay, so once she's read, uh, A, B, B Limited, and D?
Take, take them each class at a time, please, Mr. President.
Okay.
Well, I'm going to open, open the public hearing.
All right, why don't we do that? So we've heard with the, of the restaurants, uh, the licenses. So let me, uh, entertain a motion to open public hearing.
I'll make a motion, open public hearing on all of the Class A, B, D, A, uh, B Limited, and D licenses.
Okay, we have a motion to open public hearing. Do we have a second? We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries. Is there any issues? So let me, uh, I think, Madam Clerk, maybe you could read the individual establishments. Just read them all under Class B, Class B Limited, that way, uh.
Class A.
Class A.
I'm, I'm sorry, we're at Class. Okay, I don't have Class A.
Page one forty-eight.
Coventry Liquor, six hundred Washington Street, Crestwood Wine and Spirits, seven twenty-five Ty Oak Avenue, Bill's Liquor, six seventy-two Main Street, Anthony's Wine and Spirits, eight ninety-five Ty Oak Avenue, Main Street Wine and Spirits, eleven forty-two Main Street.
Just for, uh, correction on the first one, Madam Clerk, I believe it's Coventry Discount Wine and Liquor at six hundred Washington.
I just read the doing business as part.
Oh, okay, oh.
Sorry.
Sorry about that.
Okay, yeah. So what I think we'll do is just read them all, and then we'll have public hearing on, 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 on all the classes, so.
Before, before, Mr. President, do we have forms that people have completed on this? Or do we not need forms?
In the past, we have, and this is the same as the Vicuulate license.
The same as that?
If there was any, uh, any issues, they would be stated in here. So it's just ma- basic renewals. Uh, if there's any problems or any issues, like I said, they would be stated from the place of profit.
Are we required to give public notice, or are we required to have the police give some reports? I mean, I'm not sure of the process, so I'm asking.
That's all, that's all done as part, as part of the renewal process. If there's anything outstanding, if there was any issue with the police, we would have that, we would make note on the individual one.
Okay.
And, uh, we have no, uh, none at all on any of them.
Okay.
Okay, so with the subject to all the state law requirements, uh, letters of standing from, from Secretary of State, et cetera. And licenses won't be, it may be approved, but not necessarily issued until those requirements are met by the. So what I'll do is we'll read each class, and then I'll just give the, the public an opportunity to speak on, on particular. We read a Class A, does anybody from the public have a comment on Class A liquor license? Okay, Madam Clerk, would you please do Class B, please?
Okay, these are doing businesses. The Old Theater Dyna, thirty-three Sandy Bottom Road, Live Show Entertainment, Village Pub, eleven twenty-eight Main Street, Charisse Come Along Inn, four oh two Washington Street, Live Show Entertainment, Nikki's Lounge, three fifty-four Ty Oak Avenue, Live Show Entertainment, Brewmasters Tavern, it's eleven fifty-two Main Street, Live Show Entertainment and Dance, Harris Bar and Grill, six sixty-six Main Street, Live Show Entertainment and Dance, Applebee's, eight thirty Center of New England Boulevard, The Cozy Grill Family Restaurant, four seventy-three Ty Oak Avenue, Dragon Palace of Coventry LLC, five seventy-seven Ty Oak Avenue, Westcott House Family Restaurant and Lounge Incorporated, sixteen fifty Neusneck Hill, Live Show Entertainment, Filippo's Twisted Pizzeria, nine fifteen Ty Oak Avenue, Live Show Entertainment, JW's Pub Incorporated, four thirty-three Washington Street, Live Show Entertainment and Dance, Bean Barn, five ninety-nine Ty Oak Avenue, Live Show Entertainment, Morse Tavern, four forty-six Ty Oak Avenue, Live Show Entertainment, Seven Moon Coventry, eight fifty-six Ty Oak Avenue, Black Oak, seven sixty Ty Oak Avenue, Live Show Entertainment, Pond Pub LLC, two twenties, I'm sorry, twenty-two sixty Flat River Road, Live Show Entertainment.
Okay, the public has heard, Class B Entertainment. Are there any comments from the public? Okay, seeing none, I would move on to Class B Limited, Madam Clerk.
A Paglari's Family Restaurant, six thirty-seven Washington Street, Kavanaugh Lea, um, doing businesses, Greenway Cafe, twenty-one Hill Farm Road, it's granted but not issued, Brazza fifteen seven Sandy Bottom Road.
Okay, hearing the ones with Class B Limited, is anybody from the public would like to comment? Seeing none, if you would do Class D, please, Madam Clerk.
Club Jokes, one eighty-four Boston Street.
Dance.
Dance. Coventry Memorial Post, number nine four oh four Veterans of Foreign Wars Incorporated, twenty-nine South Main Street, Live Show Entertainment and Dance, Coventry Men's Club Incorporated, thirty Phillips Hill Road, Dance, Polish National Alliance Group, number one zero zero one Incorporated, doing businesses, PNA, number one oh oh one, fifteen Meeting Street, Dance.
Okay, is there anybody from the public who would like to comment on any of these? Seeing none, the chair, what we'll do is, uh, do each class individually.
Motion to close public hearing.
We'll have a motion to close, we have a motion to close public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second the motion.
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it. Public hearing's closed. Okay, we're going to take Class A. We're going to do each individual class. Uh, chair entertain a motion to approve Class A liquor licenses.
Motion to approve Class A liquor licenses.
We have a motion. Do I have a second?
I second the motion.
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries. The next one we'll do is Class B.
Class B.
And, uh, we are, okay.
Except, I need to, uh, withdraw from items number twelve and number seventeen. Twelve JW's Pub and the Pond Pub.
So will the chair entertain a motion to approve everything except twelve and seventeen? Do I have that motion?
So will.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second the motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries. The chair entertain a motion to approve Class B on the number twelve JW's Pub and number seventeen Pond Pub. Do we have a motion?
I have a motion to approve the licenses for number twelve JW Pub and seventeen Pond Pub.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries. The next one we will do is Class B Limited. And we're going to do everything except number one, so I'm looking to approve number two and three on the Class B Limited.
Motion to approve items two and three, Class B Limited licenses.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second the motion.
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries, Class B Limited. The chair entertain a motion for number one on the Class B Limited. Paglari's.
I make just one.
Just the number one.
I make a motion to approve the license for Paglari's Family Restaurant.
We have a motion to approve Paglari's. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries. Class B Limited is complete. The next one would be Class D. You good? Will the chair entertain a motion to approve all of Class D licenses?
Motion to approve Class D club licenses.
We have a motion to approve Class D. Do we have a second?
I second the motion.
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries for Class D licenses. Okay. The next item on the agenda is public comment. I will ask that you keep it to three minutes and state your name and address for the record. Is there anybody from the audience who would like to make a public comment? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Councilmen. Uh, my name is Scott Copley, sixteen Old Bishnok Highway, Coventry, Rhode Island. It was brought to my attention by a few of the Rhode Island Firearm Leagues that, uh, they heard that Coventry Police were charging a two-hundred-dollar fee for the car concealed permits, which is kind of going against state law, which is eleven dash forty-seven dash twelve. Um, I talked to Councilman McGee before, and I gave him, uh, the law, and I kind of did some research that even the Attorney General is only charging, uh, what the law says, is you can only charge forty dollars for that fee for the application process. And I know Cranston's doing that, too. So I, I just don't want to see the town be in litigation and get sued for that because other towns have been sued and they lost in court. So there's standing court cases already that have said, you know, you can only charge forty. So I just wanted to bring the council's attention, just to say, maybe you want to look into it and figure out, like, hey, we don't want to get sued and, you know, because they also, someone's poor, too. Two hundred dollars is a lot of money. And we are a second amendment community, we took that oath, and, you know, the Constitution. So I figured I should bring it to your attention, and, you know, you can, I'll send you an email, uh, President McGee, and maybe you can just give me the council's response, so I can at least let some constituents know that have been reaching out to me about this.
Okay, no, fine, thank you.
Yeah, it's eleven dash forty-seven dash twelve.
Okay, we certainly will have, uh, I'll solicit a look into it, and, uh, you know, we'll, certainly we don't want litigation if we don't have to, so we'll have them look into it, and I'll let you know if I hear anything from the council.
Okay, thank you very much.
If you want, if you want to send me an email on that, I'll respond back to you once we get it all back.
Okay, yeah, I'll see you on the email there.